2018 meeting of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Ms. Felico, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Maslin.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
Mr. Frieling.
Here.
Mr. Ponz is absent. Mr. Zhang.
Here.
Mr. Ponz will not be with us today. He's traveling and we wish him well and safe travels and he'll be back with us next month. We have before us the council meeting minutes from June 11, 2018. Do we have any additions, corrections?
Move to approve some minutes.
Second.
Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Mr. Zhang.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Frieling.
Aye.
Mr. Ponz is absent. Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
This takes us to matters of special privilege and the first of those today is the Excellence in Service Award to Frank Charlie Kelsey III. If you'd join me at the podium, please. So this special award is given out quarterly to members of city staff who exemplify everything about quality service in Williamsburg and the great thing about it is that these awards are given based upon recommendations of peers and colleagues. So it's pretty special to be recognized so. So if you don't mind, Mr. Kelsey, I'd just like to read a few words and then we'll give you a chance to say what you'd like to say.
Sure.
The city of Williamsburg takes pleasure in recognizing Frank Charlie Kelsey III for excellence in service to Williamsburg. Charlie Kelsey has faithfully and effectively served the Williamsburg public for 13 years. He has a strong work ethic and natural leadership skills, earning him just recently the position of Chief Operator at the water treatment plant. Charlie's dedication to providing safe, clean drinking water to the city is exemplary. His opinion of plant operations is valued by his coworkers and supervisor. He's an innovative employee whose ideas have improved the operation of the water plant. He's the go-to guy on computer-related issues and continues to develop and expand in this area. Charlie's experience and commitment has made him a great role model and he is quick to help fellow operators in preparing for their waterworks certification exams. His position is one that is largely unseen but crucial to the daily health and safety of the community. The city is indeed fortunate to have such a high caliber employee working for one of the city's most critical and essential services of providing drinking water to its residents, businesses, and visitors. Charlie Kelsey is a dedicated and loyal public servant who is key to the success of the water treatment plant. He is hereby recognized for his devotion to excellence in keeping with the best tradition of public service in the city of Williamsburg. And on behalf of the entire city council, this is signed by me as the mayor and Mr. Trivet as interim city manager. Charlie, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
You know, people can survive for a long time without food, they can survive without heat, they can survive without electricity. You ask those people in Thailand what they were worried about, making sure those young boys had water and oxygen, and you cover half of that. So thanks to you and your colleagues for doing that.
Thank you.
It's yours.
I'd like to thank my coworkers for nominating me for this award, my supervisor, Joe, for having faith in me to try new things, and last but not least, my fellow operators. The support from my operators is why I'm standing before you now. They are the unsung heroes of this hidden infrastructure, many of whom work holidays, weekends, and night shifts so we can all enjoy the fruits of a modern society. They do so without argument, true dedication to their work. I'm deeply honored by this recognition and I thank you all.
Although it's not on the agenda, I hope you will indulge me with one more matter of special privilege. This past week, the Williamsburg community experienced a terrible accident with tragic results. We lost one resident and one visitor, but it could have been much, much worse. In fact, it's amazing that it wasn't. We owe a great deal of thanks to the men and women of the Williamsburg Fire Department, the Williamsburg Police Department, Public Works Department, and Human Services Departments. But even they couldn't have done what needed to be done by themselves. They relied on the stalwart support of our partners and colleagues in the William &amp; Mary Police Department, the Virginia State Police, James City County Fire and Rescue, and York County Fire and Rescue. And amazingly, the people who may have had the greatest impact on saving lives that day were the residents in that community, people who came together and worked to get their neighbors out of harm's way. You know, that initial trauma may be over, but some of these folks are going to be picking up the pieces of their lives for a long time to come. And it's going to take a lot of work. I know there are probably people in this community who would like to help and lend a helping hand. Sometimes that's a challenge to find the right way to do it, so for this time period we would suggest that you consider making a contribution to the local chapter of the American Red Cross. They valiantly have stepped in and are helping some of these residents right now. Chief Dent, if you don't mind, could you just give us a brief recap of, if that's possible, brief, what took place and how you all handled that?
Mayor Frieling and members of council, as you've indicated, the tragic events that occurred on Sunday afternoon. At approximately 4:35 on Sunday afternoon, Williamsburg Fire Department, James City County Fire Department, York County Department of Fire and Life Safety were dispatched to multiple reports of a helicopter into a structure. Originally, the call came in as ironbound in Monticello Avenue. While units were en route, it was quickly updated to the 1100 block of Settlement Drive into Bristol Commons subdivision. When Williamsburg fire units arrived, there was a large volume of fire and smoke impacting multiple units. And this building consisted of 10 dwelling units. A large portion of the building was impacted initially from the helicopter going into one of the units. Amazingly, the fire crews were able to conduct a primary search and were able to search nine of the 10 units prior to the fire and smoke conditions, forcing them outside of the structure. And it went to a defensive operation where it employed aerial master streams to bring the fire into control. Took several hours to bring the fire into control, at which time the units continued searching what properties they could search based on the structural damage to the building. Williamsburg fire units remained on scene, one crew stayed on scene the remainder of the night, addressing some of the hotspots in the building. That evening, we were able to recover one victim. We were not able to recover the pilot at that time. The next morning, we were met on scene. FAA was on scene Sunday night. The National Transportation Safety Board was on scene early Monday morning and fire crews assisted them with, we continued a search of the building, at which time we located the pilot. And then, over the next couple of days, crews continued to assist the NTSB in recovering pieces of the wreckage to attempt to reconstruct the accident. Additionally, you know, we did everything we possibly could to assist the residents. Obviously, a very emotional time for them. We were able to enter some of the units and remove some valuables and medications and vehicle keys and things of that sort for the residents. But also sought out, as Peter will talk about in a few minutes, our Human Services and Red Cross to begin assisting the individuals impacted by this incident. As you've already indicated, it just emphasizes the importance of our mutual aid agreement. Because we have a response set up for what we determine a commercial structured fire response, we had adequate equipment on the initial dispatch to handle something of that magnitude. You know, obviously, in my 37-year career, I've experienced aircraft incidents and I've expected, I've experienced fires of that magnitude or larger, but never experienced an aircraft accident into a dwelling structure. But all the credit goes to those initial crews who, apparatus placement, if you're aware, Bristol Commons apparatus placement was critical so that we left the street open so other apparatus could get in position to bring the fire into control. Over the next couple of days, as is stated, we assisted NTSB with their investigation and thanks to crews from Public Works, we removed what wreckage could be recovered to an off-site location where they can continue their examination. They completed their onsite examination and returned to Washington, DC. Late Tuesday afternoon, we transitioned. Fire investigation was over. NTSB was done with their onsite investigation. We turned the property over to a property restoration company who secured the facility with, the affected unit with fencing and also hired a private security to relieve the Virginia State Police who had been on scene since the incident, maintaining security for the building. Since that time, I've visited the property at least twice a day, communicating with members of the Board of Directors for the HOA to determine if they had any questions I could answer, if they had any additional needs that weren't being met. This morning, when I visited the site, the HOA has really organized to communicate with their residents and they didn't have any additional questions as of today. Obviously, as you mentioned, it's going to be a long recovery. In speaking with our building official, Matt Westheimer, it's not likely that any of the building is going to be salvageable, even though there were three units that were just impacted with water damage and smoke damage. The remainder of the building is heavily damaged from fire and structural integrity has been impacted. That's where we stand today. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Chief Dent? Chief, just on behalf of council and the entire city, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you could also share our appreciation with those partner agencies, we'd appreciate it.
I certainly will.
Mr. Wallantish, would you mind saying a few words?
Mr. Mayor and council, following our interdepartmental protocol, once we were notified by the fire department of the incident, our on-call social worker called Red Cross as a matter of procedure, informed them that we were going out. Red Cross met us out there and I do want to acknowledge a gentleman from the Disaster Committee of Red Cross, Mr. Dean Johnson, if he's in the back. There was some, thank you, Dean, there was some tremendous teamwork between us and Red Cross. We set up a station out there and five of the affected, people from five of the affected units did come to our station, had inquiries. We provided our cards for any follow-up that any of the city residents needed to do with us. Red Cross did the same. I understand from Mr. Johnson that they have dealt with four cases so far of follow-up with residents affected by the fire. We had one of the parties come to Human Services as well, and that's the status at this particular time. The, what we did find out from our monthly communications drill with the Neighborhood Response Team Network, the radio holders yesterday, was that two of the parties had relocated to Westgate on a temporary basement, basis, sorry. And they, they're there and the volunteers in our network are there to support them for the families that went over to Westgate temporarily as well. So I do want to point out that, as you know, in a disaster like this, there's usually that initial shock and trauma. And, you know, not having been able to go back to their own units or apartments, what we will be available for is any additional emotional support or referral to any professionals in the, in the community like Colonial Behavior Health or anyone else, as well as any type of financial assistance we can provide them once these families figure out what they need. It takes a time. There's a delayed reaction of anywhere from days to a week or two before people really know what they need. And we'll, again, we'll be working with Red Cross and our partner agencies. Mr. Mayor, since you did mention, Red Cross did indicate that any donations being sent, a citizen should note Bristol Commons on that donation, on the check, so that it's clearly identified. And as I understand it from Red Cross is that they will continue to tag team with Human Services so that any donations there, they'll coordinate it with us if we have any people that have any additional needs. So we're going to stay in touch with Red Cross on that and address any ongoing issues that people might have.
Any questions?
Go ahead, Benny.
Peter, thank you for the update. I was just curious, in terms of the timeline moving forward, if one of those residents who were displaced were seeking, you know, additional consultation, is your team going to be proactively reaching out to all the displaced folks just to make sure they're okay, or is this more on the Red Cross's hands and other jurisdiction?
No, as you know, we're there for all of our city residents regardless. And we, any information we receive, or we've already had calls, for example, five interested citizens called about how can we help? And we gave them the general information that was available in the paper.
So there is a follow-up procedure?
There is, there is follow-up and where we are aware, and probably through the NRT network again, which is why this CERT neighborhood organization, which Mr. Maslin is well acquainted with, is that network will probably get further word about who needs help, citizen to citizen, and that will be communicated to us wherever there is an unmet need that's still out there.
Thank you.
The only thing I was going to ask was, I know that there have been a lot of requests and you've seen emails about donations and how people can help. So if they want to make either financial donations or if they wanted to make, I know some people have asked whether they could make clothing or food, is the best place to call then the Red Cross or to call, to call you?
Well, as I said, it depends on what it is that people are trying to help with. Right now, the Red Cross was out there with us. They could be Clearinghouse also, Salvation Army was out there. They also have a formal working relationship with Human Services. So I would say any of the legitimate agencies out there that are set up for this and that work with Human Services, you know, people can choose to call either of them. Any one of those two agencies will network back with us and be able to answer questions as well as we will. We, our outreach coordinator is Roy Girardi for any citizens who might want to ask Human Services. Any further questions, they should just ask for him and he's our emergency services outreach coordinator.
Mr. Wallantish, again, on behalf of all of council and the entire community, thank you. Mr. Johnson, thank you also.
Thank you.
Appreciate all those efforts.
Thank you.
This takes us to public hearings. We have one today. It is the consideration of grant for three stormwater drainage easements across the city's Waller Mill Reservoir property. Ms. Shelton?
Mr. Small is going to handle this report.
You look caught by surprise, Mr. Small.
A little bit. Before you today is a request by Arbordale HOA. This is by the developer who has set up the HOA for three drainage easements from a neighborhood out in the northern end of our watershed in what was known as the Boulefontz Industrial Park. The rear portion of those was recently rezoned by York County for residential development. And so that's in the process of being developed. What they're requesting here are three drainage outfalls from their property and their BMPs that would then discharge down to the bottom of the hill onto the city's property so that they can get direct discharge to the wetlands areas.
Danny?
That's it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Small?
I have one. Mr. Small, I noticed from the deed that at some point the pipeline goes beyond the RPA buffer and I'm assuming this is the Resource Protection Area buffer. I was just wondering if you could describe the RPA a little bit and how this plan seems to be just defined even with the regulations.
Yes, what the RPA is for is it's a 100-foot buffer off of connected wetlands and that's to provide a treatment area along slopes adjacent to those wetlands. So for any runoff that has to go get, go down the hill towards those, has a filtering through that 100-foot buffer. So what, that's what it's for. Encroachments are allowed onto it for stormwater facilities specifically because basically what you do is it's a minimal encroachment, the pipes are underground, as well as if you were to build a stormwater BMP in those areas, they're not asking for that in this case, but that's what it would provide is that alternative treatment in lieu of the buffer treatment.
Okay.
So it is an, it is an allowable exception of the RPA encroachment.
Understood. Thank you.
The only question is, I assume this is sort of not common practice, but has occurred in other communities when, with something like this is being developed?
It's very common. What you see is this is a very, kind of a, sort of a unique situation in that the city's property lines compared to the adjacent property lines are about halfway up the hill. You know, when the property was bought for the reservoir initially, they only bought enough to contain the reservoir and a little bit of woods around it. The property that's part of the development comes about halfway down the hill. So if they were to end their pipes at their property line, now we've got a pipe that's discharging halfway up the hill, which could cause erosion into the reservoir. So it's better to bring that pipe all the way to the bottom and allow it to discharge onto the flatter area so that we don't have an issue of erosion filling up our reservoir.
So in this case, it appears that it's more of a win-win where it benefits the developer as well as the city?
Correct.
Thank you.
It's providing protection for our reservoir.
So easements I've worked on before, typically we look at valuation as a percentage of the fair market value of the, of the land. What percent are we using in this case?
In this case, the way we did, we computed what the value of the easement was worth. Typically, easements are worth about 50% of the value. The value was determined in this case from a prior easement that was granted to the city of New Bernews for a pipeline to this area just a few years ago. And so what we did is we looked at the, what was done with their right-of-way agent on a cost based on the value of the land and it's done on a square footage basis.
Thank you.
And so that result was 14 cents per square foot over a little more than 6,000 square feet? Other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. With that, we'll open the public hearing, ask anybody who'd like to come forward and speak on this matter. To do so, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, come back to council for discussion and action.
I'm fine approving the rest of this.
Two.
Do I hear a motion?
I move that city council approve proposed ordinance number 18-05.
Second.
Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Frieling.
Aye.
Mr. Ponz is absent. Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
This takes us to reports. The first item there is monthly financial statement. Mr. Trivet, anything you'd like to highlight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just briefly, you know, last month we talked a little bit about the room taxes and meal taxes. Seems like that's what we talk about every month. This month will be no different. I wanted to point out that in June, we are up a little bit, 3.3, 4.3% over last year, and the meals is still lagging behind, down 1.16%. Of course, the sales tax, we can't compare yet because we're still working through the issue of transferring to a new software, but on the whole, the budget is performing pretty close to expectation.
Questions for Mr. Trivet? Okay. Monthly departmental operating reports? Anything there, sir?
I don't think there's anything to highlight. They've been submitted. If there's any questions, we're glad to answer them.
City manager reports. Presentation of the year-end financials?
Right. So today, we're just going to have the one presentation and we're going to ask Ms. Dameron to come up and give the year-end financial report.
Welcome, Ms. Dameron.
Good afternoon, Mayor Frieling and members of city council. Today, we want to take a preliminary look at how we're going to end fiscal year 2018. And with that, we're going to look at revenue and expenditures on a cash basis. We're also going to look at the estimate for accrual for revenues and expenditures. Then we're going to look at some multi-year trend data for revenues and expenses and then take a look at where we estimate our fund balance to be at the end of the year. And we're going to start off with our operating fund revenues on a cash basis. And as you can see, we have a budget of $36 million. We have collected to date $35 million. That leaves a under variance compared to budget of $959,000. I realize this is a little higher than what you've experienced in prior years, but I will remind you that each monthly report, we talked about with our new software, there being a timing difference with our meals and lodging specifically. And you will see in my next slide that we estimate to some accruals that will make up for some of that. And so as we move forward, you can see, this is an estimation of the accruals, so we think that by the time we make those entries, we'll have another $1.5 million to report. Significant amount with meals tax at $632,500, our sales tax for education at $249,750, lodging at $349,000, utility taxes at $133,500, the $2 lodging tax at $113,000, and $50,000 for EMS fees. When we take a look at our expenditures, again, we have a budget of $36 million. We have expended on a cash basis $34.8 million, so we have a positive variance of $1.2 million. Again, just like with revenues, we have some accruals to make and, let's see, which we'll get to shortly, I'm ahead of myself a bit here. I'm looking at this now in a different way. The previous slide showed broad categories of function areas and this is broken out by salaries, operating, and capital. And on this slide, I've also broken out the personnel contingency, which was really set aside for salaries. So salaries and benefits came in under expenditures by $388,968. Personnel contingency, we have $91,480 remaining. And our operating expenditures, we had $625,000 remaining. And in the operating fund, we do have some capital expenditures, of which we have $57,437 remaining. On this slide, I've combined the personnel contingency with the salaries for a under-budget variance of $480,000. And those variances were largely in the fire department, recreation codes, clerk of city council, and the city shop. And then the operating variances was a part of the WABMAC and you'll see shortly that I do have an accrual that we will make for an expenditure for that. Recreation, courthouse activities, and the fire department. And with capital, that was in parks and rec, fire, and building maintenance. And then the accruals that I was speaking of, we have the payment to WABMAC for two months, $212,400. We are estimating about another half a million in other, in operating costs. And then we'll have a payroll accrual for five days in the amount of $265,000 for total estimated additional expenses of $977,400. So when we look at that combined, we have our cash basis revenues plus our accrual of $1.5 million in additional revenue for total revenues anticipated of $36.6 million. We have our cash basis expenditures of 34.8 plus additional expenditures of $977,400 estimated for total estimated expenditures of $35.8 million. That brings us to a preliminary surplus of $753,845. We budgeted in the sales tax fund or capital fund. We budgeted in the sales tax fund or capital fund a contribution from the general fund of $500,000 that wasn't budgeted on the general fund side. But when we take that into consideration, it really makes our surplus $253,845, and that is a percentage of operating revenues is 0.7%. And we look at some trend data, and our blue line is the actual surplus. The red line is the estimated surplus. And as you can see through the years, we've typically estimated very conservatively, and we're still doing that. You can start to see a bit of a narrowing of that gap between our estimated surplus and what the actual surplus is. But where, what I think's really interesting is this slide. The red line shows the expenditures, the green line's revenues, and that blue dotted line is the operating budget. And you can see historically, for the most part, other than in the early years of the recession, we typically have our revenues performing better than our budget. And that continues to be true. But what's interesting is where typically our expenditures are below budget, and that's still the case, but that gap between budget and actual expenditures is almost eliminated in 2018. We also take a look at our sales tax fund, and we're estimating for the local 1% to be about $4.6 million. We received bonds, issued bonds this year, so we record that as a revenue at $17.7 million in interest and earnings at $512,000, and grants and other revenue amounting to $981,000 for a total revenue of $23.8 million. Our capital expenditure in projects was $10,157,740, and we anticipate additional accruals of half a million dollars. The project expenditures of $10,157,000 is in the areas of debt service, street projects, renovations, information technology, and enterprise resource planning upgrades, vehicles, school capital projects, public safety equipment, and parks improvement. And I would like to point out that in the debt service was a bit larger this year because we, with the bond issue, about $4.4 million was spent to refund 2013 bonds, and that's in that $10 million dollar number. When we put all that together, we began the year with $31 million in fund balance. And when we add, and this combines the general fund operating and the sales tax fund, so total revenues anticipated of $16.4 million. We deduct our expenditures estimated at $46.5 million, and that gives us a total fund balance anticipated at June 30th of $45.2 million. What's important is what makes up that fund balance? What are the components? So we have $3.2 million that's non-spendable, and that's because it's tied up in property that we're holding for resale. We have restricted for the bond funding because we have to spend that for the purpose for which we issued the bonds, which in this case is the fire station and police renovation. And you'll note the difference between the $17 million I showed in revenue and the $13 million that I'm restricting is the $4.4 million that we spent down to refund the 2013 bonds. $15.9 million will go to the capital improvement fund or is in the capital improvement fund for future capital expenditures or projects. And we have $12.8 million unassigned. And that $12.8 million, according to the city's fund balance policy, represents 35% of our operating revenue. And again, the $15.9 in the capital or sales tax project fund. The schedule moving forward is staff will accrue the revenue and expenditures for a 60-day period to, that relate back to the fiscal year 2018. Our auditors will be in the week of September 17th to continue their field work. Draft statements will be provided to the finance and audit committee members for review in mid-November, and the finance and audit committee will meet with the auditors and staff during the first week of December. And then the presentation of the final comprehensive annual financial report to City Council will be at the December 13th meeting. As we move forward through the process, we will be monitoring any significant changes to our estimates, and we'll also be analyzing data to determine why is that gap closing, particularly in regards to the expenditure between budget and our budget and our projected or estimated expenditures, and we'll report back to council any, and for any changes that are significant. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Damer. Questions? Comments?
Thank you, Ms. Damer, for your report. As always, I just had a couple of questions in the second, on the second slide. Am I going to it real quick? Can you describe real briefly what consists of the local taxes?
Sure.
Provide an insight into how we possibly got $780,000 under from the budgeting?
Sure. Our, our local taxes consist of our business license, utility taxes, meals tax, the lodging tax, communication tax. And in this case, the $780,000 that you're seeing under budget, a lot of that is related to the accruals we've yet to make for meals and lodging. I'm anticipating that we'll come in very close to budget in those areas. We also exceeded budget in certain areas, largely in our business license. I think we were about $260-some thousand over the budget there. And recreation taxes came in about $170,000 over budget. But when you look at the next slide, you can see that in meals, we had $632,500, lodging at $349,000, very quickly making up that under variance because the first slide is on a cash basis.
Gotcha.
Okay.
That makes sense. And in terms of the $500,000 that's reflected now, I think, which slide is it? It's the one that reflected the 0.7%
Sure.
surplus. When did we start that policy of transferring that cash? Has that always been something the city has done?
The $500,000 to?
Yes, ma'am.
I think historically, that's been going on for a while.
It's been, it's been about two years, councilman Zhang.
And now, and now this is just reflecting it
Sure.
on the slide where it previously has not.
There's a couple of things that, that we, Barbara and I and the staff, department heads are keeping a close eye on, we talk about a lot, is the amount of money that's available in the surplus and the amount of money that's available in the unassigned fund balance, because those are two ways to measure the financial health of the city. And so as these lines continue to come together, we have to be very cognizant of that and be prepared for what happens if they go the wrong way. And so what we're doing as a staff is we're talking about doing a budget that not, doesn't just look at next year, but looks at kind of a five-year horizon so that we're prepared for those trends if it does go that way.
And I think that's definitely a very wise course of action to take. Just one final question. For the, the number, the figure that reflects on the non-spendables
Yes.
with regards to real property for resale, these are city-owned properties that we are currently playing up for resale. It doesn't reflect the properties that we would have from the redevelopment side or anything like that.
These are properties that have been purchased and are being held to be sold.
Like Capital Landing Road.
Right, right, like Capital Landing Road. And, and because we have funds tied up in that, that's not readily convertible to cash.
Now, I'm curious, maybe Drew, you could speak to this or Mr. Witt, kind of refresh me, what, what is our, do we have a policy with regards to, with this kind of redevelopment? Are we actively seeking folks that would, that are interested and would purchase these properties off the city's rolls, or is this kind of just a wait-and-see moment, you know, with other policies we're putting to mind, just waiting for the market to respond?
I think there's, there's really two answers to that. I think that Michelle would tell you that we have a policy of land banking. So most of our properties that are held for economic development are in a land bank, meaning that they're waiting on the right opportunity to market them. But that doesn't mean that if the opportunity walks through the door and presents itself, that we wouldn't present that along with our recommendation of what to do. You know, there's, there's very precise strategies for redeveloping Capital Landing Road. We've talked about that extensively with the road project that's in the capital plan. And as Midtown Road continues to, to bloom in Midtown, it impacts the development potential of the Super 8 property as well. And so the question of when to really push to market those, meaning sending out packages and asking for proposals as we have done once before on Capital Landing Road, is really a question of when does the market start to realize the potential of that property? And so while I think it's probably premature to do that just yet, I don't expect it'll take long for us to start to get interest without that step in those properties.
So if I, if I may, one of, one of the disadvantages of just putting the property on the market and selling it is that if we do that, we relinquish control of how that property is eventually developed. Now, by holding some of these properties, people can come to us with proposals that we can then evaluate for whether or not they not, they match the city's vision and complement the corridor, I think all of these run corridors. We have Super 8, Tioga, the properties on Capital Landing, is there anything else in that?
There's a property on Ironbound Road where some of us know is the old fire station property behind, near the Aldies, behind the Aldies property. And I will mention the 912 Capital Landing Road is the only property that has a for-sale sign on it. And we do, we did go through a process with City Council and the EDA, and a broker is marketing that property.
You know, it's, it's probably also worth mentioning because it's a piece that no one ever gets to see purposely, is that when a prospect comes to the city and works through the Economic Development Office, Michelle and Yuri will take them around and show them properties that might fit, fit their need. And certainly, if it's something that we think fits the need of the property that we hold, they're going to see that, and we will try and push it as hard as we can as an opportunity for them.
Right. Well, thank you very much.
Other questions?
The only thing I want to ask, and sort it back to Benny's question on the $500,000, and I'm not sure which slide this is, I guess it's the general fund reserves, and you have an unassigned of 12 million and assigned of 15 million. Does that reflect the $500,000 already or?
I think you're
Yes.
you're talking about here. And so that 12.8 does reflect that coming out of the general fund? That's
But the one above it, the assigned, the future capital
15 point, yes, it does.
It reflects the 500.
It does, yes.
And as far as the reserve of being about $250,000 in actual reserve, how does that sort of compare to what we've had in previous years?
And the surplus
No, it's lower.
It is much lower. I think last year, it was around 1.7 million, and that is a component of how we budget, certainly, but it is also a component of how close
The lines are coming.
that gap's narrowing, particularly with the expenditures.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Two questions. On page 16, where we have the restricted bond funds, 13.3 million. What amount of money there is sort of programmed so it has to be spent for a project beginning certain dates? And what would that, what would those dates be?
I don't know that I can answer in terms of dates at this point in time. I certainly can get back with you on that. But I am going to say about 13, somewhere around 13.5 or so is programmed in existing projects. We ended up adding around a little over 2 million that is available to be programmed. And I certainly can get back with a schedule on that that includes some dates and that type of information.
The second question is with the new software, is it, what capability going forward does it have in terms of raising red flags as we go through the, the budget year? And, and would there be a point where you'd come back and say you might want to readjust the budget?
I, I think currently, the possibility of developing reports moving forward, there's a, a high degree of ability to do that, to generate red flags. I do think, and we're currently in the process of implementing additional stages with the thing code, and, and we'll be moving forward to the commissioner of revenues office. And typically, my experience has been where you're in the midst of implementation, all your energy's spent to that. When you finish those implementations, there's a period of going back and refining and getting all the bells and whistles that you would like to have. But what I would like to add in addition to that, we certainly have the ability to review data, and we're constantly analyzing and looking at where, you know, where do we stand? How much do we anticipate that we're going to have, say, in salary savings, for instance, through vacancies and monitoring that. And at any time that we see that we may need to go back and adjust that, we would be coming back to council with that information and, and looking to do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Shelton, could you chime in here on the budget question? We don't just in the middle of the year go and adjust the budget because we see revenues coming in differently or expenses going out differently.
You typically do not, but you have the ability to amend the budget as you deem appropriate with the appropriate public notices.
And, but we have not done that in the past. And I think the important thing to recognize here is expenses are still coming in, we expect them to come in more than they're budgeted. I'm sorry, revenues are going to come in more than they're budgeted, expenses will be less than they're budgeted, but it's the gap between those two
It's the gap, correct.
that's narrowing. Could you go back to that slide with the graph that shows that? And, and this is why council felt it was important this past year to raise the real estate tax for the coming year because this, we have to find a way to widen that gap. And people have asked us, why do you want to invest in this tourism development fund? What's this thing you're trying to do with investing in tourism infrastructure? I don't understand it. It's, this is a big part of that because we have to find a way to grow the revenue streams, to get those two lines farther apart, because that surplus is then what we use not only for cash reserves, but also to fund our capital projects. So even though we're taking that $500,000 out of operating and putting it into the sales tax fund, if it's in reserves, it's still available to be used for capital projects. We're just now putting it into that fund intentionally. But we have to get those lines moving farther apart in order to give staff the flexibility to continue to do the great job that they do. Is that fair?
That's fair, and to a point that Mr. Trivet made earlier, that's one reason we want to look at doing five-year projections for the operating fund, to, to give us an idea where we're headed and what, what challenges that we may be facing into the, in the, in the future so that we can, we can plan for those.
Thank you, Ms. Damer. This takes us to the city attorney report.
I have something in new business, but not under this heading.
Okay. We'll come back to you then. Unfinished business, update on Long Hill Road sidewalk expansion.
Mayor, members of council, Mr. Trivet asked that I give you a quick brief on the Long Hill Road sidewalk. This was a CIP project that we were slated to start this year, and the limits of the project run from the entrance, the driveway into Kiwanis Park up to about the city, the city limits out by the rec center. The distance is about 2,200 feet. We did take bids on the project the first week of June with the anticipation of us coming to council in June. However, the bids were, were much larger, much higher than we thought, and didn't feel comfortable bringing, bringing the bids to council. So we took a step back, kind of huddled up in our public works group, and decided we could probably take the project on our, in-house. The way we're able to do this is we've kind of, a lot of the divisions are working together. I've got like a couple of people from each division working on the project, so they can do their normal work and still do a little bit of this work. For instance, our water and sewer group is doing the digging out there. The streets division is doing the concrete work, and our landscape The streets division is doing the concrete work, and our landscape division is doing any of the tree work. So, actually, we've, we started the project this week and got a little bit of the project in. This map here is kind of an overview of this whole trail thing around the rec center and around James Blair School. The, the section in yellow is the, is the section we're, we're in the process of doing now. And the schools, they're going to extend this, a trail through the school there, that darker, let me see if I can pick this up. Yeah, this thicker line, thicker, I guess you'd call it, orange line here, the schools is doing that. So, this project will come along here, we have a bike lane in here, this is more, more of a sidewalk than it is a trail, I'd call it, because the bike lanes in here. And then just going to come around the project, the, the schools are building this section of it here. And once that gets done, all we'll have left is this here, and that section there will be done with the next phase of Long Hill Road, improvements to Long Hill Road. And there will be a sidewalk, a normal sidewalk around the front of the school like we had before. And also, on the, on the Aldi, on the Aldi side, we're doing this, that sidewalk with our road, with our road project that's in process now, so. So, after we do our section, the school does their section. Like I said, we've got one, one little piece there to finish up.
I have no questions, but just wanting to commend you and your staff for taking on the project in-house and for keeping it within the budget. That's, that is to be commended. So, thank you, Dan.
And I would like to say the same. It's sort of like thinking outside the box. If, if the original plan didn't work, you all came up with a solution to the problem, so it's very commendable. And, and I think that we all have to recognize that while the school is still under construction, it's a bit of a mess out there.
Yes, it is.
As with any kind of a construction project, and you just have to be patient, and then once it's all done, it's like, wow, this is great, and tend to forget the, sort of the mud and the mess that goes on with that.
If things look good after it's all said and done, they tend to forget about what happened.
Right, right.
It's hard to have a new building without building it.
Exactly, yes.
So, we aren't on schedule for having the sidewalk completed before the students need to use it?
The sidewalk's going to be closed, the section we're doing, like I said, the, the school and our project will have those sidewalks done around James Blair. We're going to be a little bit lagging behind. We're, we're thinking that we can get pretty close up past Long Hill Woods with, with our section, and, but we're pushing. You know, that is our goal, is to try to get done as soon as possible, so. Probably got several folks involved in this thing.
And I, I thought Benny was going to ask whether you could self-perform constructing a fire station.
Mr. Clayton, could you talk a little bit about what, this path, when it's all complete, we'll transition from asphalt to concrete and back to asphalt again? Can you talk a little bit about why the choice for concrete in this area as opposed to asphalt?
Well, if you look at the, this overhead thing here, the rec center here, actually, it's, it's a concrete trail all the way down at the frontage of the rec center here on that service road, and then the concrete wraps around and goes all the way down. So, we're just essentially extending the concrete, I'm calling it a sidewalk, because we have a bike lane in this area. And, and then we get down, we do this, the school does this, this is going to be an asphalt trail, that they're doing a 10-foot asphalt trail. When we get down to here, Paul, we're probably going to transition to an asphalt, because there's no, there's no bike lanes along Ironbound, so this will probably end up being a 10-foot asphalt trail.
So, in this, the yellow section, was the concrete decision more about cost or durability or some combination?
Well, yeah. It's the, our experience has been, if you look at the, actually, this trail along here that they, that the county that they built, they just had to resurface that thing, and they haven't had to resurface the concrete trail. The same thing with the Capitol Trail. If you look out by the, by Chico Valley River, the Capitol Trail, that has already been resurfaced. So, it, 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 it doesn't do very good with roots, and along this section here that we're doing, you know, there's quite a few trees in there. So, if you notice, a lot of trails have that little bumpiness. We just finished a section out of Walla Mill Park, that trail out there, so the roots wreak, wreak more havoc than they do with the concrete.
And do you know, will there be any limitation of access, a restriction of access, on the orange part that goes around the school property at any point because it's school property?
They tell us it's supposed to remain open, and so it'll, it'll be able to be used by bicycles or whoever, so.
So, I guess worst-case scenario, you could...
I don't, I don't have the game plan exactly how that's going to work, but that's, that's the game plan.
But worst-case scenario, folks still have the option of going around the entire property on the sidewalk?
Right. Now, you know, the sidewalk in around the frontage of the school will be a normal five-foot sidewalk. So, we're counting on this, on this to be able to, you know, to be part of the network through the school, so.
Just one question. You said that the asphalt that's part of the future will be 10 feet, and there's no bike lane there. So, is the presumption then that people would use that both, that 10-foot as both bike and pedestrian?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clayton.
Thank you.
This takes us to new business. So, we're coming back to Ms. Shelton here for item number one. Consideration of an ordinance to amend Section 5-167 of the City Code requiring smoke detectors in certain structures.
So, Section 15.2922 of the State Code was amended, which involves smoke alarms in existing buildings. We have an ordinance on our books already that provides for this. This simply updates that to specify that retrofitting wiring is not required, although battery-operated smoke detectors are not considered retrofitting for purposes of the statute. It also requires that owner of rental property is required to furnish the certificate to the tenant every year that the smoke detector has been tested and is functional. In between that period of time, the tenant is responsible to ensure that the smoke detector stays functional. And so, this just simply brings our ordinance into line with the State Code, and so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
So, thank you, Chris, for that presentation. I'm reading the, I'm sorry, we're on the wrong one. When I was reading the ordinance, it seems to go beyond just the rental inspection program. This applies to owner-occupied dwellers as well.
It does.
How does the city enforce that?
So, the reality is, we're not going to be able to go knock on every door and say, do you have a smoke detector? So, we're going to do this as reactionary ordinance, number one. And number two, when someone comes in to get a building permit, they're going to have to install a smoke detector if they have not done so.
So, under, so my house is under rental inspection program. Now, I'm required, if this ordinance passes, to provide a certificate to, that, that there is a smoke detector to tenants? Is there any change to the program where, you know, when we, for example, I come up for re-inspection, re-certification, is there something, I have to present a copy of the certification as proof that I've, that I've shown my tenants that, that, that I've complied with?
Sure, you're, you're going to be required to provide a functioning smoke detector.
That's it, that's just it, okay. It's the notice of tenants, just on our own, the landlord's responsibility then. Okay, gotcha.
And, and back to Ms., thank you, Chris, for that explanation, but also, as part of this whole process of letting people know, I assume that it will be included in education and outreach by the fire department and by the rental inspection program and, and all of those different entities.
Yes, so a big piece of this is education, and I know that there is an ongoing program that the fire department runs very successfully to educate people regarding smoke detectors and the need to have them, and this will be a piece of that.
And hopefully, you're doing that already, right? Okay, good.
Yes.
What is our current requirement for carbon monoxide detectors?
We do not have a requirement that a carbon monoxide detector be provided. There is a requirement in the State Code, in the change to the State Code, that allows for a tenant to request a carbon monoxide detector from their landlord, and the landlord is then obligated to provide it, although the tenant does have to reimburse the landlord for that cost. The section that allows us to enforce this, the provisions with respect to smoke alarms does not contain the provision regarding carbon monoxide detectors.
Okay. No, I don't have any comments. Do we need to move this? We have a staff recommendation that city council adopt a proposed ordinance.
I move that city council adopt proposed ordinance number 18-04.
Second.
Ms. Felico?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Mr. Pons is absent. Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
This takes us to consideration and approval of Resolution 18-08, including SmartScale 2018 projects. Hello again, Mr. Small.
Mayors, members of council, as I'd mentioned in previous years, the Commonwealth has changed their main method of funding transportation projects into an objective-based formula known as SmartScale. Projects are evaluated every two years, with the current round of funds requested becoming available in fiscal year '24, and at the, which is right at the end of the six-year improvement plan. Some projects could begin sooner, but only if funds become available. All projects are evaluated using a cost-benefit ratio, and in Hampton Roads, a large portion of the benefit score is based on congestion mitigation, so you'll see a focus on that on these projects. SmartScale funds do not require a match from the locality, so that's why they're very nice to go after. For the three projects that were advanced to scoring in 2016, all three were awarded, so we've been very successful with this program. For this application period, the city's requesting funds for four projects. Proposed Resolution 18-08 requests SmartScale funds from VDOT for the Richmond Road Signal Coordination and Pedestrian Improvement Project, the Lafayette Street Signal and Pedestrian Improvement Project, the Lafayette Street Reconstruction Project, which will be, has to be renamed, and then the Monticello Avenue, Richmond Road, Lafayette Street Roundabout Project. The first two projects are modifications to existing traffic signals along major city corridors. The Richmond Road Signal Project would coordinate timing and synchronization for seven signals along the Richmond Road corridor from Governor Berkeley Road in the north to Monticello Avenue towards the south, and include four signals that are on the two major side streets of Ironbound Road at Long Hill Road and Trayburn Drive, and also along Monticello Avenue at the New Earth Fair and the VDOT signal at Trayburn Drive. We would also require, we would also evaluate and add pedestrian signals for those intersections that require it, should they not exist now. The Lafayette Street Signal Project would coordinate timing and synchronization for three signals on Lafayette Street between Armistead Avenue and North Henry Street. Both coordination projects would improve progression for vehicles that pass through the lights with up to four different timing patterns for peak and off-peak traffic as necessary. And VDOT is advised that our application requests for these two projects be accelerated, if possible, due to their relatively low cost and simplicity. So, we're actually hoping for earlier implementation than FY '24. Third project was originally described in the fiscal year '18 CIP as pursuing an improvement designed using the concept of complete streets. This means the inclusion of improvements to accommodate better use by vehicles, mass transit, bicycles, and pedestrians. Underground wiring and new streetlights are also planned elements. The main improvement along this corridor would be to widen the existing travel lanes and bring them up to standards for a minor arterial roadway. Currently, we have nine-foot lanes out there, and we would be widening out to 11-foot travel lanes. It would also provide for a replacement sidewalk on the southwest side of the street, maintain the on-street parking, and add a multi-use trail on the north side of the street. The main widening project is from just north of Bacon Avenue to just south of With Avenue, but it also includes extending, the overall project includes extending the multi-use trail along the northeast side from With Avenue down to the municipal center. The estimated cost listed in the FY '18 CIP is $1.8 million. VDOT policy requires that a portion of this project be local funding, of course, to pay for the underground wiring, since they don't cover that with their federal funds. So, please, and also, I ask you to be aware that when considering the resolution for this, I was just informed this morning that the project title should be changed from Lafayette Street Reconstruction to Lafayette Street Widening, and that's the order to maintain the project eligibility, since the word reconstruction implies a maintenance project, which are not eligible for SmartScale. So, that'll help us improve our application. The final project is to convert the existing signalized intersection of Richmond Road, Lafayette Street, and Monticello Avenue into a one- or two-lane roundabout. VDOT and FHWA both recognize that roundabouts frequently improve both safety and operational objectives over traditional intersections. A roundabout was first proposed at this location as part of the Monticello Avenue conceptual design with Midtown Row, and was a popular alternative when presented at the Design Sheret to the public. In addition to improve safety by minimizing conflict points, roundabouts also save energy of both the city by reducing the electrical and maintenance costs of the traffic signal, but also of the public, who no longer have to wait at idle for a signal light to change. The estimated cost is approximately $4 million, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have for these projects.
Thank you, Aaron, for your presentation, very detailed. Just walk me through it again. So, we, we will be applying, submitting applications for SmartScale this year.
That's correct.
But we won't actually see the funds realized till as soon as fiscal year 2024?
Right. The, the actual decision, we apply now, applications are due August 1st, and then VDOT goes through a process of evaluating and scoring all of these projects.
Sure.
Then they present their recommendations. The Commonwealth Transportation Board doesn't meet until next June to actually vote on these projects for the six-year plan. And then that, then that goes into the six-year plan, typically at the very end of it, so these are your FY '24 projects that are selected.
I'm just wondering aloud, and not necessarily, you don't have to necessarily provide the answer, because 20, 2024, fiscal year 2024, I mean, a lot of things can happen in between now and then, you know, council could, this makeup of council could completely change. What, if you have applied for a project, we find out about approval, what, as soon as next year?
We could find out as soon as next year.
Okay, so there's still, it's not like there's a gap of timing where, let's say, another council says, I don't want to do this.
Wouldn't even start until another five years after that.
Right.
So, the planning for these take a while, and then once you've got the funding in place, then you've got the process of, you go through about a year of design, a year of right-of-way and utilities, and then a year of construction.
Right.
So, you're talking, usually, most construction projects are three-year projects. Our signalization coordination projects would occur much faster, because there's no needed for additional right-of-way or even construction plans.
Right.
So, that process can probably only take six months to a year.
Right, and most of the projects there seem very reasonable, such as the traffic light synchronization. Lafayette Street Widening has been mentioned already in our comp plan, but with the Monticello, Richmond Road, Lafayette Street Roundabout, that still hasn't really been codified by the comprehensive plan, but the silver lining is, by the time 2024 comes around, we'll still be in keeping with the updated...
That's correct. But all of these projects, were they to be funded, they're just outside the current CIP, and that's why you don't see them. Lafayette showed up in the FY '18 CIP, because we'd anticipated revenue-sharing funds to help fund, pay for half of that.
Right.
We were not awarded those funds, and you'll notice it's not in the FY '19 CIP.
Right.
So, what it is, is it's gotten pushed out beyond that. This would put it in the six-year plan for VDOT, which would move it into our five-year plan next year.
And just a really quick question with the traffic light synchronization, that's different than the HCP traffic light?
That is different than the HCP money, which is a flashing yellow arrow implementation. So, what that would do is actually change some of the nature of some of the signals, but it doesn't provide the synchronization between the signals.
Gotcha.
What this does is basically, when you get caught by the light at Monticello Avenue heading down Richmond Road, it would be set up so that you leave it, get the green light. By the time you get to Mount Vernon bypass, you should be able to progress all the way through. And depending on the time of day, it'll change the timing pattern.
So, right now, how's that?
To correlate to the, what's normal for that time of day, during the rush hour, peak hour, or in the middle of the night, you know, as far as how it's...
This will be a smarter capability to assess that, because right now, we just have those monitors that we put.
Right, correct. Right now, it's just based on whatever the sensors show up, and then it runs through its signal. Some of our signals do talk to each other, but they don't, it's not as good implementation as it would be if we could do them all at the same and have them all on the same cycle.
Gotcha, understood. Well, good luck.
You know, one thing I'd like to note, Mr. Zhang, was, was pointing out that this is kind of an early submission of projects that we, a lot of... of an early submission of projects that we, a lot of circumstances could change between now and actually constructing.
Correct.
So correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Small, but this is not, this should not be viewed as a commitment of the city to do these projects. This is really just an expression of intent. If we're awarded the funds and we arrive at that point in time and we're still interested in doing them, then the money would be there.
Gotcha, okay.
That's correct.
And, and on the flip side, if we find out next year that the money has not been awarded to us, or that we haven't been selected, then we could decide that a project, say the, the roundabout was of importance, that we would want to try to include it in a CIP project.
Or find some other method that could fund it faster.
Help fund it.
That's correct.
And, and as far as, as the roundabout, since you have it up there, having lived in Europe, that's pretty much what they have everywhere, and even when new intersections were created, it was always with the roundabout in mind. I think the United States has really lagged behind other countries as far as using it, and once they're in place, it is found to be a, a good way of, of moving traffic through.
That's right.
Even though it's a little scary initially, just to sort of get used to who has the right-of-way, but I think it is becoming more commonplace. Just one thing on the synchronization, I would think that that would be a common sense sort of logical thing that would be done when streetlights were installed, but I take it that.
It is, but tends to what happens is, it's actually fairly new, and we've, but it's an expensive, it used to be more of an expensive proposition. Nowadays, the technology's out there where we can install basically a GPS unit inside each one of the traffic boxes. And what happens, has to happen, is they have to be set to the same clock, so that at midnight, they know that it's all at midnight, so that the, you know, clock strikes at midnight. Well, what tends to happen is, is if you do it based on the power grid cycling, what will happen is, is the clock will start to drift a little bit. I mean, I can tell you, everybody can look at their watch in this room, and they're all going to have a different time. Well, if I've got 12 o'clock and the next signal has 12:01, that doesn't work with the signal synchronization. Do you see how that works? And so if you've got any kind of drift, that causes problems with that progression through the signals. So what tends to happen is, is what we do is, we can install a GPS unit inside each one of the things, and then they all check their clocks at the same time and are synced to the same satellite. And that way, it's all set at the same, they reset their clocks every day. And that way, we don't get out of whack.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Two questions. In terms of the synchronization, does that also offer the chief the opportunity to use it for controlling speed? In other words, if someone's going too fast, they're not going to see that green light until it's calculated that if they were at the posted speed.
That's, that is correct. That is one way that it does work that way, but it still doesn't prevent the chief from pulling them over.
The second thing is, one of the ecomments for this meeting was, how are we improving our intersections? And I think you've explained some of that, but are there other things that we're doing in the near term that you might want to mention?
Well, we do have, as Mr. Zhang mentioned, we do have our flashing yellow arrow project that we've received full funding for, but that won't start until FY '22, I believe, on some of the design phase, and then hopefully, we'll have that implemented in FY '23.
What about?
And then we've got a new signal going in at Ironbound and Long Hill. That will be synchronized to the Richmond Road signal, so that we don't get cars caught in that short space in between. We're also planning a new signal to replace the shopping center signal on Monticello Avenue as part of the Monticello Avenue improvements. And then the plan is also, while we're doing that design, we will do synchronization between Richmond Road, the light, the new light, and the VDOT signal at Trayburn Drive. So we'll have some initial impacts in those corridors, but we're overall trying to do some other things. And we also just redid the sensor systems at our bypass road-Richmond Road intersections.
You want to explain that a little more, so that people don't have to wait for that nonexistent pedestrian at 6 o'clock in the morning?
Well, that, that's actually already, the money's already been procured, and we've actually already got it under contract. So hopefully, in the next few weeks, there will be some work going on out there on that particular outbound lane, as you head north on Richmond Road from Bypass Road. And what it does is, it'll allow those signals to be triggered by that particular lane. Right now, about the only time that that doesn't happen is, is kind of in the middle of the night during low traffic, because you could be sitting there and it doesn't know you're there.
Thank you.
Just a few questions, if you don't mind. The, the whole SmartScale project is an objective process with laid-out scoring criteria in several different categories.
That's correct.
And you mentioned congestion mitigation. Safety's another one?
Safety, there's actually economic development is one, a small component. I forget, it's about five major criteria. Congestion mitigation is Hampton Roads' biggest. That's actually 45% of the benefit score.
So each project is evaluated independently?
Independently.
Now, even with that said, does our prior success with, you mentioned the three projects that we had, does that impact our future potential?
I'm like, past performance has no, you know the standard line.
And it's probably important to know also that with those five criteria, each region, a certain criteria may be heavier weighted than another.
That's correct.
Depending upon what that region needs most.
Okay. Does submitting more project requests impact the potential for any one? Again, they're all evaluated independently. So if we had one project that we really, really wanted to do, we're not lessening our chances of the scoring of that by putting in other projects?
No, it, it really doesn't lessen your chance, and we are restricted, given our size of our municipality. We can only submit four projects, and it's up to a certain dollar amount. We're not, I don't, I believe, I can't remember what the dollar amount is, but it's in the $10 million per project range, something like that. But we don't get close to that, those limits. We do hit the four projects as the max.
So our four projects come to about $6 million, a little over?
That's correct.
Which sounds like a lot of money, but from the standpoint of?
A billion?
Yeah. It'll fit. It's good to know. Could you talk, you mentioned something about the, the first two projects, the synchronization of the traffic lights, that VDOT was encouraging of those happening sooner? So where, where does that money come from, if not from VDOT?
I had a discussion this morning with folks down at the VDOT central office, and their suggestion was, make sure I mention, we would like these accelerated, if possible. So if there's a project that comes up next year who has a half million dollars left over, it goes back into the pot, and they've got to find a place to spend it. So they're going to be looking for those projects that are under half a million, that scored really well, and they would be glad to accelerate it and give it to us.
So they will take care of putting those in some little holding pattern in case there's excess funding?
That's correct.
And with the Lafayette widening, in some ways, Lafayette is like the Newport Griffin area, where you have those cars parked there, and there's not a lot of room. It helps keep the speed down. Is there any concern about widening that road, leading to people?
It is a very straight road. So yes, I can see issues with speeding becoming an issue. So that is one of the things that we're going to have to look at when we look at the design, to see if there's any kind of traffic calming solutions that might be, need to be implemented while we're doing the work.
Okay. Any other questions? A motion? And with that, we, in the motion, do we want to change the name of the Lafayette Street Reconstruction to Widening?
Yes, please.
So I move that council-approved Resolution Number 18-08 endorsing four projects, the Richmond Road Signal Coordination and Pedestrian Improvement Project, the Lafayette Street Signal and Pedestrian Improvement Project, the Lafayette Street Widening Project, and Monticello Avenue-Richmond Road Lafayette Street Roundabout Project, and authorize the city manager to proceed with applying for SmartScale 2018 funds.
Okay.
Second.
Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Mr. Ponz is absent. Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
This takes us to item C, consideration and approval of a budget amendment for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, Proposed Resolution 18-07. Ms. Dameron.
The law enforcement block grant has accumulated a small fund balance, and this is from projects that came in under budget, but it's also from, this is, we're required to have these funds in an interest-bearing account, so there's been some interest earned over the years. We're requesting to use a portion of the funds, $11,200, toward the purchase of an e-citation program. And this is an electronic ticketing program. It's a faster and more efficient way to generate reports and citations within the police vehicle. It offers the capability of being able to scan a barcode on the driver's license or registration and capture that data, so there's less risk of error. They're automatic, then this information's automatically downloaded into the court system, so it eliminates additional data entry. It also eliminates paper retention. And this information can also be imported into other reports, like an incident report or a accident report. So that is why they would like to have the system to incur these efficiencies.
Questions?
Yeah, Ms. Dameron or Chief Dunn, with this fund, the remaining fund being used from this block grant, is it just simply to purchase the equipment and program, or does it also include possible or potential maintenance funds?
Unfortunately, this is just enough to cover the cost of the, of the initial program purchase, not ongoing maintenance. And it also does not include the cost of the scanners and printers that will also be necessary, that'll be funded out of general operating.
Do you have any idea how much that would be?
I do, I believe around $4,000 additional on top of the $11,000.
Okay. And with the current, I'm assuming with the current program right now, it's just simply outdated?
Well, no, the current program right now is just pen and paper.
Oh, pen and paper, oh, got it. Yeah, yeah, that's what Ms. Dameron was saying. Got it, so this is moving in online.
Yeah, exactly. You know, it allows the officer to be much more safe during the traffic stop, rather than looking down, writing the ticket. They're, they're actually able to spend a whole lot less time looking at the computer and a lot more time focusing on the vehicle. But it also allows us to do it much more quickly, so unfortunately, the, the citizen who's been stopped can be on their way much more quickly with the system.
That, that, that element is really the offset to the cost of the maintenance, but it also, this action does not preclude us from including or increasing a technology fee as part of the citation, which can help cover future costs.
Gotcha. And how long do you think this program typically lasts for? I mean, before there's a software update, or maybe you have to do an overhaul, is it like 10 years or five years?
Well, with the, with the vendor that we're using, it's, it's the same vendor that we're using for the rest of our records management system, and they are annually having different upgrades and that sort of thing. So, I mean, if your question is, will this be the only cost associated with this, I would say no.
Not necessarily. I was asking more about the duration, because every program has a certain duration before it becomes outmoded, outdated, and it's just, I'm just curious to see what that cost would be.
I would think that with our annual maintenance fee, which includes some upgrades and support, we'll be fine with this system for, for a very long time.
And our comparative localities are utilizing?
They are.
Thank you.
I was going to ask about localities using this, and that this was more the, what everyone is doing, and very far, few people are still doing the pen and paper, and you already answered that, so. And, and I assume with the, the software and the program, all officers of the police department would have access to it, once the appropriate scanners are, are purchased?
That's a great question. We're intending to put this in all of our marked vehicles, which are our patrol vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
So, Chief, in addition to capturing information, does it give any feedback to the officer in terms of red flags?
Certainly, it does. Excellent question. Once the officer scans it, we'll have it programmed to do a certain number of checks, including the license status, whether or not they had previous DUIs, that sort of thing, and also whether or not they have any warrants on them that we're aware of. So, yeah, again, it just makes the transaction quicker, allows us to have less time on the radio, which, as you can imagine, is very precious to us, and then allows us to get the citizen back on their way much more quickly.
Thank you.
Yeah, and nobody likes to be sitting on the side of the road with a police car behind them with those lights flashing as all their friends drive by, I'm sure.
We understand.
I don't see you can't use the excuse, "Oh, I gotta go, you know, I'm, I'm late for something, you gotta let me out of this ticket, it'll only take a second."
I don't think we, we undervalue the, we can't overvalue the importance of the safety element for the responding officer, and also the accuracy of the information that's retrieved, because even a small error in data entry can have really potentially bad results. So just ensuring that is important. Do we have a motion?
I move that Resolution Number 18-07 be approved consistent with the staff recommendation.
Second.
Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Mr. Ponz is absent. Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
This is, we have one more item of new business, and that is mayoral appointments, city council and staff for committee representation. This may take a little bit of time, but I'll go through each one of these, so please bear with me. So I'll list the assignment, and then the representative who will fill that role. Regional committees are Hampton Roads, mayors and chairs, Paul Freiling; Peninsula mayors and chairs, Paul Freiling; Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Paul Freiling with Andrew Trivet as executive committee; Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization, Paul Freiling with Doug Ponz as the alternate, and Andrew Trivet as the ex officio; Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission, Paul Freiling with Doug Ponz as the alternate; Hampton Roads Military and Federal Facilities Alliance, Paul Freiling; Greater Peninsula Workforce Development Consortium, Ted Maslin; Virginians for High-Speed Rail Board of Directors, Ted Maslin; Virginia Peninsula Public Service Authority, Andrew Trivet with Dan Clayton as the alternate; Virginia First Cities, Benny Zhang with Barbara Ramsey as the alternate, and Andrew Trivet as city manager appointment; Historic Triangle Committees, Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance, Benny Zhang; The Tourism Council, Doug Ponz, I guess, does the Tourism Council yet exist?
They have not formed yet.
But it's okay to go ahead and make that appointment at this time. Historic Triangle Collaborative, Paul Freiling, Andrew Trivet; School Liaison Committee, Doug Ponz and Barbara Ramsey; Wayfinding Task Corps, this, this appointment would be made by the city manager?
That's right.
And do you mind if I break the news?
Sure.
That will be Dan Clayton. Hope that's not a surprise to you, Mr. Clayton. The Williamsburg Transit, Area Transit Authority will be Andrew Trivet with Carolyn Murphy as an alternate. City committees, the mayor's beautification and awards landscape grant committee, right now will be Hazel Braxton and Diane Spence, and we have one vacancy that needs to be filled. The finance and audit committee will be Paul Freiling, and the investment committee will be Andrew Trivet and Doug Ponz, although those appointments are made by the city manager also. Neighborhood council, Williamsburg, that's an interesting arrangement. I will be the one who attends each monthly meeting, and then city council members will alternate their attendance on a rotating basis, and whenever I'm not available, I'll certainly open that up for another council member to participate. The QuarterPath Community Development Authority, Andrew Trivet, four-year term expiring 7/31/19. Williamsburg Economic Development Authority will be Barbara Ramsey. Public Safety and Human Services Committees, the Local Emergency Planning Committee will be Ted Maslin. The Virginia Peninsula Regional Jail Authority will be Andrew Trivet with Sean Dunn as an alternate. And the Old Town Medical Center, a city council rep, will be Benny Zhang. That concludes that. Thank you, everybody, for all of your efforts in these various committee assignments. This takes us to the open forum portion of our meeting, where anybody who would like to address council on any matter is encouraged to come forward, state your name and address, and if you could keep your remarks to five minutes or less, we would appreciate that. Seeing no rush to the podium, we'll close the open forum, and I believe we have some items for closed session.
That we do. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter, sub-paragraph 1 and 29 concerning city manager position and search, and one legal matter per sub-paragraph 7 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members, consultants, or attorneys pertaining to actual or probable litigation concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes Act.
Second.
Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Mr. Ponz is absent. Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Council will take a brief recess and reconvene in closed session.